So one of your first points of action, it seems would be to find people for the planning board. So.
Bill, did your guy apply?
Morning.
What?
He did this morning.
He did this morning. Great.
And it's Greg Vinzer.
Oh, wow. Okay, good.
He made application this morning.
Okay.
Yeah, he's York County Administrator.
Yep.
I spoke with Barbara. I don't know how much of it needs to be on, you know, as part of our meeting. But Barbara said that there wasn't a specific statement in our charter saying I need to be not on both town council and planning board.
Hang in there if you want. Actually, seriously, if you can hang on till a couple of people come on, that'd be great.
Yeah.
You can be on both if you wanted to.
If I can, if I could be on both, I don't mind being on both to kind of, you know, help help out and be a person.
Let's just take this up when we get in session. I think that'd be great.
Okay.
That was often the transition a little bit.
Exactly.
Okay, it's 6:32. So I'm going to open the meeting of the November 3rd. Planning Board meeting in South Eric. Role, we're all here. Just for the record, I'll call people's names. Jeff Menahan.
Here.
Randall. Herschel.
Yep.
And we go.
Yeah.
That's five. That's great. First order of business is approval of previous minutes. And we have the minutes from October 6. And we don't have the other ones, do we?
No, no.
We have the October 6 minutes, which were submitted yesterday or today, yesterday, I think.
Bill?
Yeah.
Coming in and going out. I don't know if there's something wrong with you.
Oh, really?
It's, we're getting feedback from somebody. So whoever isn't on mute, probably.
Was that better? Is that any better?
I don't know. I'm going to turn off.
Is that, is that any better?
No, it's, you're floating in and out your voice.
Straight all day. Uh, let me see.
Manley, is anybody else?
There's nobody here, except me.
Yeah, I turned it up. How about that? Is that a little better?
Maybe. Maybe it's my hearing here, but everyone else sounds good.
Can the rest of the people hear me okay?
Yeah.
Okay. That's better now, yeah.
Let us carry on. Any comments or corrections to the minutes of October 6?
I hate to be picky, but my last name is spelled incorrectly throughout the minutes.
That's not picky.
Sorry, sorry. Yeah, I think it probably just happened once and then you know how autocorrect just picks it up. And if you do it again, it just sort of fills it in. So. H I R S C H K O P.
The H and the K.
Yeah, got transferred. Yeah, something like that.
Okay, I'll, I'll make those changes.
Thanks, Amy.
No, that's not picky at all. Anything else? And I'll take a motion to approve.
I'll make motion.
Moved by Manley. A second.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Betsy. Any discussion? Okay, since we're virtual, I'll take the role. All those in favor of setting the note, raise your hand and I'll just look around. One, two, three, four, five. Okay, good. Great, thank you. Is there, next one is a call for public audience. Is there anybody here that wants to speak of something that's not on the agenda? Hearing none, good on that. I don't think we have any official correspondence other than the administrative stuff. We'll go straight to the business. And I, with the consensus of the board, since Chris Berry and the O'Neills are present via Zoom here, I would ask for consensus to skip over our ordinance work and get to their business so they can not listen to us for an hour. We talked about all this stuff. Is the board good with that?
Good with it. Sounds good.
Okay, Chris, the, the, the board is yours, please.
All right, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Christopher Berry with Berry Surveying and Engineering, representing the O'Neills here this afternoon or this evening. We've been to two sketch plan hearings on this project off the end of Pleasant Street and the project's formal mode is Edie Main Street or Amy's Lane. And so we, at the last sketch plan review, had discussed things such as density, street right of way of Pleasant Street and how that extends onto a property. And I believe that the board was satisfied with our responses and asked us to move ahead with full, full design and site plan review. And so I will, I'll share my screen here. No, that's your agenda. You don't care about that. There we go. So. There we go. So the plan I have in front of you is the soil remediation plan that's required. This plan also has the unit density calculation upon it. And so this is eighty Main Street or Amy's Lane, where there are nine units that were approved and built. Pleasant Street is here at the bottom of the screen. And the, really the piece of property that we're talking about is the remaining land that's associated with that project. As we pointed out, under the sketch plan review, there's been a concept or two presented as. I'm sorry, I thought somebody was talking. There's, there was a concept or two that was previously done for this piece of property when the eighty Main Street project was developed. And it was determined that essentially eleven units would fit by capacity, with the exception of soil remediation would be required. And so this is the plan that we prepared to demonstrate to the board which areas of soil would need to be remediated from somewhat poorly drained soils to well drained soils. These are the areas that would require approximately six inches of material be brought in, graded out, and then restabilized. At prior planning board meetings, we did not have the right of way of Pleasant Street nailed down. We had some, we had a good idea as to where it was, but we had not physically surveyed it for ourselves. And so as you can see, we've now done that. And your planner points out that part of the actual Pleasant Street infrastructure extends beyond right of way. And I'll get to that in just a second. The actual proposal is to add one additional unit, one single family unit for a member of the South Borough Community, Mr. Promley, to, for the O'Neills to essentially build a house for him so that he can reside there into the future. That will require that the driveway be extended off the end of Pleasant Street. We do, we did have the right of way established after this plan was sort of developed. And so we understand that there are a couple of small encroachments that we are showing on a plan. We would obviously slide this driveway over and realign a part of Pleasant Street to accommodate a proper driveway entrance off from Pleasant, into the project site. After our last meeting with the planning board, we met on site with the new town administrator, the former town administrator, Jay from some consultants, I think that was a coincidence, but MJ, the DPW director. We talked about things such as water utility, sewer utility, but more importantly, snow, what, how they deal with the snow at the end of Pleasant Street. And so as I note in my narrative, the O'Neills are willing to install basically a small turnout in this area here to allow for the DPW truck to push snow back up and then leave. And the planner points out that we don't show that on this plan. We're happy to do so and happy to provide for the easement on this plan as well as a formal document that would be recorded to allow the town to continue to do that. As part of the project, we understand that we're in relatively close proximity to wetland areas. And so what we would like to do in terms of grading is shown to ensure that the site can be graded out appropriately without entering the twenty-five foot buffer. And so you can see the proposed proceptions and the proposed profile that we're showing. We're proposing to essentially super elevate the site to this lower section, which would be the vegetated buffer, try and keep the flow and sheet flow format and flow that over the remaining buffer back into the brook that throws, grows through here now. Utilities, we're proposing a gravity sewer main from the existing house down to the gravity sewer that resides in Pleasant Street. And then there's water utility that's also in Pleasant Street that would be brought to the family home. A couple of things from the planner's letter that I, I would like to point out. This is one cohesive site, so one cohesive site plan. But mainstay law allows for conduzation, so it allows for us to condoize or create a limited common area around a structure or even within a structure so that this area would still be part of the basic parcel. But we would be generally private so that the future homeowner of this structure would basically utilize this space as their own, though it is still one piece of property and owned communally.
Sorry, I interrupted there. So I, I don't, I'm a little bit confused by this. So it is this condominium, condominium mine. So the owner of the home buys the condo, if you will, and that is the property. Is that right?
So the, the owner of the condo buys the house, so he would own the physical structure. And then this area around the structure would just be what's known as limited common. So that's the area that that person can utilize with some exclusivity, but it's not actually a lot, like, you know.
A lot, he owns the structure. He owns, he owns the, the structure, not the lot.
That's right. That's correct.
Yeah, but, but the condominium documents are modified to create the common area that he has rights to.
That's correct. You got it.
So in the future, if he wants to sell that condo, he can sell the condo.
Yes, sir.
Land doesn't go with it.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep. The remaining land or the remaining area would be limited common area too. That would also be part of the condominium, but in this particular case would be sole ownership by the, the applicants at this time. But again, if they wanted to sell off individual units, they could do so in the same exact way. So as I pointed out, there are a couple of small details that we need to modify. There are a couple of comments that we agree with the planner. But in general, I think this is a more detailed plan set than was discussed during sketch plan review and consistent with that sketch plan review at that time. So I'd be happy to try and answer any questions that the board might have. And we would like to glean any additional information that the board might want and then move to a public hearing.
What is the footprint?
It is, the footprint of the house is two thousand, it's a two thousand square foot ranch, so it's single floor living.
Okey dokey. And are you looking for any official action for, for us this evening?
Whatever official action allows us to move forward to a public hearing with the board is what we're looking for.
Other questions? I got a few, Bill. Wait. Those are your, up here. Yes. So the way the compliance, compliance with the zoning requirements, it says, how, how frontage is the frontage on Main Street from Amy's lane? Or how does that operate?
Yes. So again, because we're not really, this isn't a subdivision where you're actually removing this lot from the remainder. The parcel stays the same, so the frontage is calculated along Main Street.
And, and side setbacks and all that are those apply, right?
One more time, sir.
Is zoning, zoning setbacks still apply? You know that's applied on Main Street?
Yeah. So zoning setbacks still apply to the parent parcel.
Yeah. Right. And in this case, the, I can't read it, but that was a side, side lock setback and so forth that was what it looked like. Um, let's back up because I, I remember I was on the board when eighty Main Street was approved and the whole density calculation and the facilitiation of the, if you could walk through, that, that entire lot, as I recall, supported a certain number of lots. I think it was eleven or ten. And that was based on, I found it odd, because all the, all the units were up along Main Street, but we were changing the soil types, the physical soil types way back on the back lot just to play a number of games. In order to get the number of lots that were allowable that supported the townhouses up front, we're going to, well, that's not true, because those, those nine houses were supported on a lot without the facilitiation. If you go to ten or eleven, you have to do something with the soils to benefit the soil. Is that right?
Yep. So the, the original yield of the property was eleven and a half or eleven, call it eleven. But assumed that the soils on site would be, on the entire site would be modified in the way that we're showing. We're only proposing the tenth unit. And so we're only proposing the amount of soils remediation that would be required to utilize this tenth unit.
And, and describe why, why that has to be done to increase the yield.
The, the remainder of the site or the area that you're seeing as hatched, you know, with a solid transparent hatch, that area is known as somewhat early, poorly drained soils. And it, and it is only somewhat poorly drained soils by inches. If it were a few inches thicker, it would be somewhat well drained. And so we need to modify the thickness of the top area of the soil by that few amount of inches to change the classification from soil from somewhat poor drained to somewhat well drained. And that will then change the number of units that the site has capacity for. It's sort of ironic because we're not on sewage disposal systems here. We're not on wells. We're on municipal water and sewer. But still, the density calculation is based on soil, soil.
Now, you talk about inches. I can't remember who did the soil survey for the original development of the name.
I, I don't have the original soils individual. We, we have rehired Kenneth Gardner to do the soils map for this project.
Oh, so this is original work.
This, this is, this is all offensive work by my company.
Okay, gotcha. So now we're using the old word to do a new word.
That's right.
And you talk about if the inches, you talk about inches of vegetative layer that needed to be, what, what, describe what, what the shortcoming was of the condition.
It's the depth to seasonal high water table in total. So it doesn't have to do with an AB horizon or a CD horizon. It just has to do the total depth to seasonal high water table. And so we need to get to that total depth to seasonal high.
So what, what's the depth to season high difference between poorly drained and well drained?
I believe the difference is between fifteen to twenty inches, but I would have to verify that with Ken.
I'm sorry. Oh. Did you say, did you just say fifteen to twenty inches you'll need to add?
No, 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 no. We need to change the soil from about fifteen inches to seasonal high water table to just inches. So it's about six inches.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Oh, I, I mean, my, my concern with adding five inches of soil with, I mean, there is some elevation there, is that it gets put down, you get a big rainstorm, and then I see a house and a garage and another house that's all downhill, right? So is there like, is there a specific company or person that can provide us with a map of like how you do that where if there's a big rainstorm, it doesn't all get washed into the neighbors?
Yeah, me. I can certainly provide.
Right.
I'm, I'm not, as, I'm not as an expert as maybe some on the board are, but I know quite a bit about stabilization methods, so I can prepare a stabilization plan for you.
Okay, that's what, that is something I would, for sure, Madison.
Yeah, I didn't, to be honest, I didn't study the detail sheet, but the erosion and stabilization plan, it's pretty good to do. You're opening up, I don't know how many, how many square feet or acres of, ten thousand square feet there, ten thousand feet there.
It's about thirty, thirty-two thousand square feet or so.
And do you intend to do this with loam?
It would be a mix of sandy, sandy loam material. Yes. It wouldn't just be pure topsoil. We would ensure that we've got a sandy mix into it to allow for some reinfiltration into the ground.
I always thought that was an odd application, but that's what the regulations say. And that's what the yield requires. But it's crazy to, to beneficiate soils across that you're never going to touch again, across the creek, and get the benefit of that on, on your land. But that's what's the numbers there. Odd when, when the O'Neills were looking at it to begin with and less odd now if you're going on one lot, one, one year. Um, another question was, uh, we had to go around after the original Amy's lane was built and then you got involved, Chris. We, there was a, the original approval had all the drainage from Amy's, the nine units there, townhouses, coming back across the thing within the site and then discharging down that slope. That, that did get built that way, right? It wasn't a condition that had it going south, but then you fix that. And there's a, there's a pipe that goes, discharges somewhere above this house. Can you locate that pipe? Because that's, and then I think it needs to be, and so we, we need to see how that drainage is accommodated with the, the placement of the new unit.
Yeah. Yeah, that way we don't have a pipe discharging into somebody's bathroom.
Yeah, because my memory is it's right there. And I think that might need to be modified. I think there's probably ways to modify it, but it doesn't need to be modified. That takes all the parking area of eighty Main Street. Discharge to that slope there somewhere.
Bill, on that same subject, the house that's sort of at the, at the furthest south corner, southeast corner, there was the drainage issues there. But I stayed, I seem to remember at the last meeting, I, I was just looking for the correspondence that they'd sent, but there was some drainage issues down there. So I don't know if that, I mean, obviously existing, so.
Well, you are disturbing with all this soil benefitation. You need to, the stabilization plan needs to look at where the water's going. Because you aren't modifying the land. You're, you're changing the land. It's not a significant change, but it is a change. So you're opening up all the drainage, mixed dark terrifics. Go back to the, the, the road location. Yeah, the driveway. Now, you're, you're going to have to modify that, you said, to stay within the right of way.
Yeah. So I mean, this is, this is kind of a drafting faux pas. We, we had designed this off the end of Pleasant Street. We had prepared all the plans. And then we had finished the right of way locations, tossed them on, and it was like, I don't want to sound like a schmuck, but it was the day of the deadline. So it was like, okay, we, we knew we needed to, to correct that. So.
Has there been any discussion of, so you're talking about it being just a driveway on the public right of way? And not, not extending Pleasant Street to the right of way. Talking about trying to get a driveway. What, or to be any conditions where Pleasant Street might be extended? You, you need, you would need an agreement or easement from the town to construct that driveway?
No, we, so what we've agreed to is where, right now, I'm sure they just come down and plow snow here. We agreed to allow for an easement in this area for them to come down and basically plow their snow off the end. So we don't need an easement to access Pleasant Street with a driveway. We're offering an easement to the town to ensure that they can maintain their road moving forward.
And I think we need to see that and the turning radiuses and how that all works without throwing into the wetlands and so forth.
Understood.
That, that, that's critical for the viability of the project.
So I, I don't mean to punt responsibility here, and I did read David's memo, but I was wondering if we could go through David's points if there wasn't any that got answered. Because there were, for him, a lot of unresolved issues that he mentioned from our last go around.
Well, you know, I read David's letter and I felt as though a number of these issues raised had been resolved. Talked about again, the, the density again here tonight, but that was, that was discussed during the sketch plan review. The right of way of Pleasant Street was discussed during sketch plan review and we had provided for all of the deed evidence that confirmed that. And then I think a lot of David's other concerns, I think we've discussed. Um, and then I think a lot of David's other uh concerns, I think we've discussed in terms of. Uh, emergency access and snow removal. Um, the uh sale of the house as a condominium and how that uh works. And then I guess future development and master plan, um, I mean, these guys don't have any immediate. Plan, develop a site further, there's one additional, with additional soil remediation, there'd be one additional. Allowed, um, but quite frankly, getting, permanently getting across that brook. Uh, for that one addition, uh, isn't something that they're looking to undertake at this point, so. Uh, maybe really long-term horizon, but not on the short-term horizon for additional units.
But now, uh, David, that, uh, wanna highlight that?
I'm sorry, Phil.
I'm sorry, is there anything else in your memo that you'd like to touch on that Chris may not have touched on?
Um, no, I think we. I think we've hit them all, I'm just looking really quickly. Yeah, just, I mean, all of the, uh, I think we did that, if, if, uh, I guess it's, it's whether or not the, the right of way gets. Uh upgraded to the property line and wherever that, you know, that kind of thing needs to be ironed out, I think. If the, if the town wants to require the Pleasant Street to be upgraded to town standard or whatever, a turnaround, but that's not my call, that's a. That's both a policy and a uh. Uh, code issue, I guess. The existing tree line, I, I, it'd be nice to see if what's gonna remain and keep as much existing vegetation. Um, I mentioned that.
Yeah, the tree line, yeah, we talked about that actually.
Okay. And I thi- I think we've got it, if, as long as they're okay with that house remaining as part of the condo development.
Yeah.
That's, I, I, you didn't want to take a look at those documents, but apart from that, that, they can do that. Lead, I mean legally, they can do that lease kind of agreement that way. Or excuse me, sales agreement that way, sorry.
Uh, so we. Uh, you, you described a, a meeting with uh. The, the former town manager and a, and the public works director. When, when, when was that, when did that meeting occur and go over that again, please?
Uh, so I, uh, I don't have the exact date, but it was, it may have been a week after our last sketch plan review. And uh, we wanted to discuss, we were discussing this project in a, um, and another one that we have worked on. But uh, the major topics are for concerning uh this project were. Uh, utility hookups and uh design and they really wanted us to meet with Jay, the, the wrote, the new road agent. Uh, at the time about uh how to maintain this area and get snow plowed off that area, so that's. Uh, so we met on site to discuss that and subsequent to that, um, I point out in my narrative that. Uh, the O'Neills have met with the two uh closest to budding landowners. Um, and they're willing to uh basically reconstruct certain areas to. Make uh parking areas a little more convenient for them to use uh moving forward, so uh they are talking and working with budding landowners.
Is, is that on-street parking or?
Um, well, I, I think.
Or, or what kind of parking would that be and where?
Well, it's really, I, I don't want to say parking per se, it's more um. How, how to make the Pleasant Street geometry uh work so that in the wintertime, uh, there's more sufficient space on the street. Um, so it's not like we're constructing actual on-street parking, uh, but we, a- as you point out in your letter. Uh, Pleasant Street needs to sort of move over a little bit, there needs to be a widening that takes place. Um, and so all of those things were discussed with the, uh, with the neighbors.
Okay. So we just, we just need to get, uh, I, I all need to touch base with the public work director on that, so.
But what I, what I, I, what I like to see, you talked about several things here, they're all accomplishable. Uh, some additional design is needed for the ru- roadway, the driveway, uh, the clarification of the drainage coming down from Amy's way. Um, uh, the turnaround and snow storage that needs to be shown. Talking and whatever other modifications we're gonna make to accommodate those two uh, 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 butters. Um, and whatever else we talked about, I think we need to see. I, I, I would like to see the, that plan before we uh have it proceed uh to the public hearing, because all those details are necessary. My view to, to move it forward, I think, I think everything we talked about tonight is accomplishable. And if, uh, and if, uh, if the people down on Pleasant Street are. Support it, then that's all the better. But I think it, it needs to be flushed out. And uh, before we can take it to public hearing.
We, uh, hey, did they met the requirements for sketch plan approval?
Yeah, we did, uh, last May or June, whatever that was.
Okie dokie, uh, so what, what's the next, next one, uh preliminary approval?
Y- y- yes, and I don't think, but, but they're, they've described how they're going to make it work, but I think we need to have those drawings. And so that we can give a quick sample, a further review and, and a public hearing.
Would that be, would that be before the uh public hearing or after the, the preliminary?
Absolutely. And also, and then going to the public hearing, I think we want to get confirmation from. Uh, from the boards director and the current town manager that Dave read would be, would be the concepts for this thing. And you get a letter from them, uh, to get a letter from the waters, to get a letter from the department. Uh, just blessing all these things which are here to be fine, but you got, you can get documents, you can get parties that are. Good, you need to take that all the public hearings, you're talking.
Can I make a, can I clarify that, Phil? Sorry, your, your, yours is the only one I'm having a little difficulty with. Are, are we talking about the next time that this had come before, it's a preliminary review? With um, a public hearing? So they had revised the plans, we do a public hearing at that preliminary, are we going?
I think it go to final.
Go to final straight away, I just, just want to make sure. Okay, final review, but we'd be looking for all of the things from BW and the town to be ironed out.
Yeah.
And the condo docs, all that stuff, okay?
Yeah.
Oh, fine, final review for the preliminary or final review for the review?
Final review mainly. Just that we would go to final, final review on this, with these changes.
But the changes have to happen for us?
I think so, because we don't know what, what the project is, there's two or three major issues that we don't.
Yeah, and that, and that's, that's no problem, as, as, as Bill's pointed out, these are, this is a light lift, so it's, we, we'll take care of it.
But.
All right, so we'll, uh, we'll get this buttoned up and uh back to your uh staff, because this is a, a project that. Just so I understand your deadline schedule, because it's a project that we're actively discussing, there's a one-week lead time on that, is that correct, Amy?
Oh. Yeah.
Yes.
They, they get in by the Tuesday before the meeting and we'll get, the Tuesday before the meeting.
All right, great, well, thanks for those input tonight, is there, uh, is there anything else that I need to put on my to-do list?
Loaded up pretty good, no, I think it's a good project and it, it's gonna be accessible addition to that little village area. And uh, I'll just. Clarified and we need to agree with some certain people demonstrated, which sounds like a side of your problem, but beyond that, I think.
All right, great, well, we look forward to finishing it up and seeing you soon.
Thanks, Chris.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thanks.
Great. Okay. Um, so let's go back to the ordinance uh reviews, we had uh. Two related ones, if you recall, that was the notice requirement for uh site plan review and subdivision review. And then we had uh the third one, which was uh trying to clean up the. Uh, variance or waiver determination for um, uh, modifications from street design. They're quite separate, um, Dave, Dave, you wanna talk, just to think of the uh. Notification requirements for site plan and subdivision review first, I think they're simple.
Yeah, um, let me get, pull those up, that's a memo. Hold on. Okay, so. Let's see, I'm gonna share my screen if that's okay. And let's see, look how many documents I've got open here. Uh, should be this one. See the proposed ordinance amendment, working draft of eleven three right here?
Yep.
Okay, good, all right, so really, uh. Subdivision, what we did is we were adding some language in here regarding the sketch plan, and this would require the public notice to be sent out. Uh, early on, it, it talks about the specifics about exactly what, um. What uh information we want sent to a butters, how long lead time, they have a week in, in this draft. They have a week to, um. Uh, a week to go through it. And um, and then I, I pulled over some language about what types of things we're gonna be looking for at that sketch plan type thing. And um, we also made, having a public, uh, uh, excuse me, an informational meeting. Uh, is required, so there, uh, this again, just, it's really just cleaning up the. To make sure that the applicants know to find folks at sketch plan, so they can be involved from day one, basically. Uh, I think the, the language is fairly straightforward, um. I, Bill, did you see the, uh, the uh email from Phil?
Yeah, yes, I did see that.
Okay, so it looks like the, this change and the change for site plan. As far as notification is concerned, would be okay to approve as sort of an administrative change at the planning board level. Without going to a, a huge public hearing, because we're not changing the substance of, of this one and also the uh subdivision review notification.
Wait.
Okay, was, was there any questions in this, was there any changes?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay, so the, okay, so the next item, I'm gonna close this one out, hold on. So the next item that I have, hold on, now it's in my way.
Yeah.
Uh, hold on. Right, so I don't need that any longer, I have something else. Okay, so. Hold on, sorry, you're, there we are. So as far as those two are concerned, as far, uh, let me go back to the ordinance amendments. And now we're gonna do site plan review ordinance amendment. This was slightly different, uh, but really same concept is, uh. I added in since our last time, we also language, I added in uh right here. Right here, I added in the conservation commission and historic district notification. Uh, for written notification requirements. And apart from that, that was the only comments in there, so I don't know if anyone has any comments or additions that you'd like, or.
Again, just a, for, uh, refresh everybody's memories and for people listening in, uh, this is in response to um, um. Question that we clarify, publics write that have uh, uh, questions, the applicant. Catch plan level at the beginning of a project. Thought that, that was pretty much there anyway, but then we found other things to fix, so. The gist of the regulations, we're cleaning it up, making it right there. And it was the whole thing that is to, is to provide the public with a. The applicant at the first major. Appearance of the applicant.
I'm, I'm good with that.
Okay, and everybody? The.
We got consensus on, on both of these ordinance drafts.
Hold on one second. There we go, let me move this over here. All right. And uh, and then what I did also on these, so for example, um, I pulled together memos. For each of the different ordinances, then we can hit the, uh, the one that does need to go to the board. But this one, again, this is for tonight's, this I drafted from uh, from the planning board to the town council. And it gives an overview, this was very similar to the memos I've done before. Um, but this one, as there was a lot of strike through, I'm just gonna attach the memo. Redline as it is, once, you know, I changed, for example, this, uh, this, I'm pointing at it, this up here. Um. I'm sorry?
You're sharing your screen almost?
Yes, I, oh, I thought I was, oh man. That's what's missing, all right, uh. I'm sorry, I, I've got a couple of screens going here, so can you see it now?
Yeah.
Okay, so what I was saying is this is a very brief memo, uh, regarding the subdivision. You cannot?
Nope.
There you go.
There you go, all right, so for example, on each one, I broke them out independently, so I didn't want to send something to the town council. That had all these different ordinances, and so what I did is I went through. And um, this is just a very, like, we've done red underlines for additions, strike throughs for deleted text. And so most of them are, are, are just that simple. Um, so it just gives an overview to the council and the last. I think one that we need to go through the actual ordinance is, hold on. Okay, so the first one is waiver authorities.
Stop right there, let's, let's take these two.
Okay.
Subdivision, that's like plan notification thing, and uh, I'll, I'll, I'll look for a consensus to move these forward as we're discussing, and I'll, I'll call it all on that, Jeff?
Yes.
That, were you good?
Yeah.
Was she good?
Yep.
And it was good.
Move on, great. Okay, good, all right, the last one was going to be, uh, that's the memo, hold on, waiver authority. Here we are. Okay, so, uh, again, this is talking about the street spec- specifications, you're seeing this right now? Yes, hold on. How about now?
Yes.
Okay, proposed ordinance amendment, street specifications, again, uh, this one was uh from, uh. From the board to the town council. Red underlines is strike through, and then what I did is this one, because it needed some, I, I put the actual language in the memorandum. Because I figured they may want to tweak it, work it, this item up in the header here, I need to change that if the, the planning board. Uh, agrees that this is the memorandum that you want going to the town council. Uh, I like, this is what you saw last time, it all talks about the variant standards, I really changed very little in the, in the memos. Uh, but I pulled, or, excuse me, in this memo that I pulled together for the, uh, for the council. So apart from that, uh, what's, uh, the most important bit, excuse me, is the language itself, let me get back to that, I apologize. I mean, look, look at it, there we are, all right, so the actual design standard, uh, what we were doing is we were clarifying a couple of different things. Um, we took out some language, uh, that was undue hardship and the authority to grant any undue hardship. Um, was given to the board of appeals previously, this has been discussed all over. That uh is being switched from board of appeals to the planning board. Uh, you guys are the folks who are looking at subdivision, the like, so you should be reviewing this, the, the roadways in their actual context. Um, the other item that we put in here was where the required standard is clearly illogical and impractical. You know, if you are, if someone's doing a subdivision, they have to put in certain roads and there isn't a sidewalk within, you know. Uh, within ten miles, you may not want to have them put the sidewalk along roadways that exist, you may want something interior, but. You know, we'll look at it on like a case-by-case basis, and then um. We got some uh appeals language, the one thing I will, uh, is one thing I need to change on here. And that is, uh, after I drafted this, I sent it to town's attorney. And he's given some recommended language, because we already uh reference the appeals procedure elsewhere, so I'm just gonna drop that language in. I'm sorry, I did not have a ti- a chance before tonight's meeting to put that in there, so. It was the attorney's recommendation, so I figured. It was the attorney's recommendation, so I figured that unless there was changes, Bill, that you saw in that. It it looked good to go to the council, I thought. This one, we also talked about having a joint workshop, we've requested, uh the planning board requested a joint workshop with the council.
Yes, I think that's appropriate, because uh the history of this, I think I I talked about last time, uh I don't know, eight, ten years ago, the council at that time. Took away the ability for the. That the planning board previously had to waivers, and they set up a very clunky thing about it going to the EBA. And so this is this was back the way it was, but it's improved, it's better wording and so forth, but it is, it is a policy issue.
And and uh one of the cases that this sort of came up to ahead with was the Bennett Lot project, as you recall. Uh oh, excuse me, not Bennett Lot, uh. Uh Meadow Pond subdivision, the third phase, when we, uh when the board first heard that case. It, they were talking about just not putting in sidewalks despite the rest of the subdivision having them, and. The application was sort of like, well, then go to the zoning board, just apply to not get. Go with to the zoning board before the planning board, get a waiver from putting in sidewalks, then bring the project to the planning board. So that item would be off the table for the planning board, that doesn't make any sense whatsoever, so again, that. That sort of closing that gap there, put the put the review authority where it belongs.
There was an excursion that happened, so you know, with planning procedures for whatever reason. And and it needs to come back to planning board, the planning board can do it.
So apart apart for that, I guess, what I'm looking for is a vote from the board. To uh make the appropriate changes as re- uh recommended by the. Uh town's uh attorney, and then forward this to the council with the request to go to the uh public workshop.
I'll make that motion.
This could be his last meeting with the. We'll we'll let him adjourn, man, let me be careful, no.
Alright, so uh I'll I'll call the role of Jeff.
Yes. Yes.
You will, okay, one last item, um uh do we have anything else that we need to go through, or can? Okay, the only other thing that I wanted to show you real quickly is uh. I'm gonna screen share this time before I start talking about it. Okay, so um earlier, I sent this to um. Uh earlier this week, I sent this to you, and it was basically a project tracking uh sheet. Of where we're at, and what I try to do here is, you know, the project name. Uh then when we get down to ordinance amendments, what the ordinance amendments that I dropped in the ordinances that we were just. Working on here, uh so what I'll do is after this meeting, I'm going to put in. Uh I'll wrap it up by putting in dates here, um just some general meeting status. And what I'm looking for, or what we are looking for, is to make this a working document, so. Amy, Joe, myself, whoever uh whoever's assigned to sort of maintain it. Keep the information in here, I'm happy to do it um while I'm working on this, but I I was hoping that that it becomes a working document. Um where we can sort of keep track of everything that happens, so you have it in one place, and this could just be sent as an attachment. Monthly or every, you know, planning board meeting of where we're at with every single case that we're working on, because unfortunately. A couple sort of fell off the radar before. Um one thing that I that I've been trying to look at is how? How to deal with cases that we've, that the board's been discussing for many times, so I, for example, I looked at Bennett Lot. Earlier, and I went, okay, so here's a project over the course of over a year, where, how, what happened on this project? So I tried to review uh project name, you know, it's original a five lot subdivision, at the very end of it, it became a four lot subdivision, and I got. Withdrawn overview of the project. And but then what I did is, I I thought, I, when I started playing with the document, I realized that having all the meeting dates. And maybe calling out the the highlighted dates, your application, complete sketch plan, preliminary plan. Uh final approval or project status at the end, but I wasn't sure what other information you guys might want.
Well, David, I wish I could give you like an award. Or something, because this is so nice.
Good, well, I mean, anything else that we want in there, and again, it just just for keeping track of things.
Can you, can you just put in the application date, like the date the application is actually submitted to the planning board? Because that triggers, you know, something.
Right.
A few things, so it's good to have that.
I'll add submission date, excellent, I'm just gonna get that right up here. That's. Excellent. I have that column in there, but. And I don't know about anything else, but. I thought it was fairly well covered, but. As things come up, we can like that, we can create columns and just add them in there and put it in the same format and. Um every, everything's different, so I figured play with it for a while and we'll see what happens.
Yeah, that's definitely.
Love it.
Yep, it's good work, it worked.
Okay, that's good, so uh we're getting to the the end here, any uh? Member comments on the record? You'll officially congratulate Jeff for his election to the one one year council seat. And uh Jeff, I think you said that you're willing to stay on. Other reason why you can't serve on both the council and the planning board, and you're considering staying on the planning board for a while, right?
Yeah, yeah, I don't wanna uh leave the planning board at risk of not having a quorum. Um so as we're hun- hunting for more people, I'm I'm certain willing to stay on board for for a time.
I have something to say, Bill. So we've got a new member coming on, is he gonna come on as an alternate, or is he gonna come on as a full member?
Supposed to come on as a full member, assuming that Jeff was going to uh uh pull off. So the so the uh council can decide what to do, uh I'm I'm sure he's willing to come in as alternate if all five of us stay on. However, I'm stepping down at the end of the year, as you know, so there'll be a fifth spot open at that point, he'd be a full member when I step down.
Seems to me that possibly uh he could come on as a full member and Jeff could go on as the alternate, in case there's a problem. Jeff could step in and fill the gap.
That's a great suggestion, and we can work that out.
Now we got a full, full board.
But you know, as I say, I'm I'm at the end of the year, I'm I'm going to um. Be all uh hug goodbye. Like so there there'll be a a need for uh other people to come in for for my spot, and either way, that that works. That's great, uh it it's official, it's a, he applied this morning, and so as part of the public record, it's Greg Zinder. Uh and and as we talked last time, he he would require that we shift it from the first and third to the second and fourth in general. Now, I, it's a little bit of a clumsy remark, but there is a five people running for council, who made it. There's three people who have public interest. Maybe one of them would like to apply for the planning board. I'll throw that out there. I would appreciate all the candidates that have big, big uh commitment on all their parts. And uh that's a real commitment to public service, but uh. Once they shake the dust off, they might look around and say, hey, it's planning board, they could think of this for a while, so. Yes, Amy.
Um if we're going to be taking on the new member and we need to change the dates, do we have to do that with a vote?
Would change the bylaws?
I don't think the date is specified in the bylaws, is it?
Joe may know if we, if they are or not.
Yeah, the the bylaws say the first and third Wednesdays of every month.
And I, I have a conflict already, so I will do my best to look at. What to do about that?
How do Thursdays look for folks now?
We can do, we could do um a different day, I mean, if you guys want to talk, well, talk, but. We could do a a Tuesday. Oh no, we can't do Tuesdays.
Let's do first things first, let's 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 have him get the appointment. Uh you're you're on you the.
Oh, like I'm saying, you know, Tuesdays, maybe it'd be the first and third Tuesday, something to that effect, if that accommodates. Greg, but I don't know, I mean, that's something that you guys can discuss over the next, you know. Yeah, by the next meeting, anyway, you can figure it out, right?
Right.
I heard a rumor from somebody that they were working on another uh uh application for someone else, that's just a rumor. So I'm hopeful that will back up the, you know, full five with my absence, and then maybe maybe six and seven, that'd be fantastic. Fine, fine, we did, we got a lot of, lot of capabilities along the line of of a lot of what we did.
So is that that appointment, do we know when that's gonna be made, or has it been made?
Requested that it be taken up uh at the council meeting next week. But you know, it's their business, but I I saw a request that it be taken up at the council.
Right, they were, they were gonna try to get it on the agenda for next Tuesday.
If that's the case, and it goes through on next Tuesday, will we then have him with us for the following Wednesday? Or at least announce, you know, announcing?
He gets sworn in, he can, he, once they appoint him, he can just warn him as soon as Barbara Benes wears a mask.
Okay, that sounds good, so then for the next, possibly for the next meeting.
So, Amy, how are you feeling?
Oh, I'm fine, thanks, Manly, I'm doing okay.
So, we're in a club now.
Oh, don't say that, I don't want to be in that club any longer than you do.
Have the open hot pod, the uh.
No, it's a, it was, it, yeah, I'm on the very low end of all of that, so um. But I'm doing, I'm doing well, thank you for asking, and all is good, and I'll be home for a little while working, but. It's a, it's, it's okay.
Well, I'm glad it worked out good for you.
Yes, thank you.
Uh if there's no other comments, uh we'll take a motion to adjourn.
That me today, I'll I'll make a motion to adjourn.
All second. Thank you all.
Night, everybody.